Good evening, everyone. Sorry we're running about five minutes late, but I think almost all of us are here tonight to start off the council meeting. First, I'd like to ask to call the town council, to call the order, and the vote call. Mrs. Georgia?
No.
No, she's not. Okay, Mr. Waters.
Councilman LaBosinier.
President.
Councilman McGee.
Yeah.
Councilman Carlson.
Yeah.
Councilman Bacon.
Yeah.
And Councilman Chitlin.
Present. Okay, and then if I could ask Mr. Piat, if he could call the vote call for the sewer subcommittee, please.
Tony Reposo.
Excuse me, I believe Mr. Sturka, the chairman, is running a few minutes late, so we'll go to the vice chairman to call the order.
Tony Reposo.
Yeah.
Joe Spada.
John Coluluka.
Here.
Mike Sakasha.
Here.
Glenn Pierre. Not here. And it's Glenn Isley.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Spearman, if you would be so kind to lead us in the pledge allegiance, sir. Can everybody rise, please? Hi, pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And also if you could give the emergency evacuation plan if needed, which we hope not. Okay, if things run emergency, just exit up in the front, in the middle, and in the back there.
If they want to exit.
Follow the exit signs, take your right out. Okay? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, following the agenda, item B, B1, we have resolutions for discussion and action. I guess, I'll read it, resolution number one, B1, resolution authorizing the town manager to look into an appropriate place to stop construction of the sewer line on Hazard Street and have the authority to order construction to stop once the sewer line is satisfactorily constructed to such point. So that is the first resolution that we are handling tonight, and with that, are we going to read the evacuation of Mr. Waters?
Mr. President, I have a question.
Let me get mine answered first, Mrs. Carlson.
That's up to you. If you'd like to make a resolution.
Well, and then, just in case it has changed a little bit from what we have, I think it'd be a good idea, or at least, Mr. Gorham, yes, I think that'd be in order.
So this is entitled, can everyone hear me?
No.
Just turned it off. Now I turned it on. This is a resolution, and the president just read the title of the resolution, and here is what it says. Whereas Town Council by Resolution 59174874 awarded the contract to construct sewers along Hazard Street to John Rockio Corporation at the June 26, 2017 Town Council Meeting, and authorized the town manager to proceed with the project, and whereas, the contracted price of $421,442 is the amount the town agreed to construct the Hazard Street line, and whereas, the town has determined that it is in the best interest of the town and its residents to determine if there is an appropriate place to stop construction of the sewer line on Hazard Street based on unprojected and unforeseen construction costs if the town manager determines it is necessary and appropriate, and whereas, the town council wishes to authorize the town manager, in consultation with the town's consulting engineers, Weston and Sampson, and the town finance director, Common, comma, to determine if there is an appropriate place to stop the project prior to completion, and whereas, depending on outstanding expenditures, excess materials, and other factors, once a stopping location has been determined by the town manager, the town manager, in consultation with the town's consulting engineers, Weston and Sampson, and the town finance director, is authorized to act as the agent of the town to ensure that the construction is completed in an orderly and satisfactory fashion up to such stopping point, and whereas, the town manager is authorized and appointed as the final negotiator, negotiator, excuse me, and signatory on the contract with Rockio, including termination thereof to the point where the town manager determines that construction of such line should be stopped, and whereas the town manager will report back to the town council on the final outcome of the Hazard Street sewer project, now therefore be resolved, that the town council, the town of Coventry, Rhode Island, authorizes the town manager, in consultation with the town's consulting engineers, Weston and Sampson, and the town finance director, to act as the agent of the town in all respects in executing the Hazard Street sewer project, including the power to terminate the contract, the John Rockio, John Rockio Corporation, in a selected appropriate place in consultation with the town's consulting engineers, Weston and Sampson, and the town finance director, if necessary, to stop construction of the sewer line and to negotiate such termination with John Rockio once the sewer line has been satisfactorily constructed to such point. And then it just says pass and adopted today. And so that is before the council for discussion, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gorham. In that the resolution before us has been read, and I know we probably had discussion, but I firstly would like to have a motion to accept.
Abol.
And, second.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
I'm, Mr. Carlson, I know Mr. McGee wants to, go ahead. And I wrote this out just so I wouldn't forget anything. Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that the council postpone the two resolutions under item B until after item C, numbers one and two. This will allow council to consider the expert and professional testimony from the town manager, the sewer subcommittee, Weston and Sampson, and Mr. Angelo Liberty, who is the chief of surface water protection at Rydam, who was invited to our meeting by Senator Reptakis. We may then consider changes, additions, or stipulations to the two resolutions, and I also want to thank the help we've received from our state delegation, and I'd like to welcome everybody here. It's great to see such a great-sized crowd. Thank you. So I'd like to make a motion to postpone discussion and/or action on these resolutions until we hear all the other.
Well, okay, we have a motion and a second, so later on, that would be your, I guess, ours in the past, and you'll have your chance for another motion. Mr. McGee, you have a comment?
Yeah, I'd like to, well, this would be a good time to make my statement. I want to read a little statement I made concerning this whole situation. Stay with me, maybe a couple of minutes. I would like to make a statement about our sewer program. When I took office seven years ago, we already had a sewer infrastructure and a sewer fund and a facility plan in place. Part of our job as elected officials was to maintain the sewer fund so it would be self-staying sustainable, and to do what we had to do to continue the growth of the sewer fund and ultimately the sewer projects. We have attempted to make the assessments more feasible, but it is very difficult with the high cost of construction. The assessment process is pretty much done the same way throughout most towns and cities in the state of Rhode Island. As mentioned on Tuesday's council meeting, if we do not continue our sewer program, the sewer fund will not be solvent within a short period of time. The payment on our bonds will have to be paid out of our general fund and cause a tax increase to every taxpayer in town, whether you have sewers or not. In my eyes, that is not fair to those taxpayers that will not benefit from the program, which includes approximately 30,000 people. Furthermore, it is, it is not fair to those taxpayers who have already paid their sewer assessment and now would have to pay taxes again. I feel that the sewer program is right for the town of Coventry. However, I hear my constituents' concerns about the financial hardships that the sewers would cause, as District Three is full of hard-working, blue-collar families. I hear you. After last Tuesday's meeting, hearing the discontent and concern, I had a conversation with our town manager and my fellow councilmen and sewer subcommittee member, Greg LaBosinier, and we thought it would be a good idea to halt the sewer projects until we could do a socioeconomic survey throughout the whole town to reevaluate the needs and wants for sewers. I did a survey of the Quiddick area in 2011, sending out approximately 250 surveys with frequently asked questions, including sewer assessments. About one-fifth of the surveys were returned, which is 48 out of 257. Hazard Street had four residents, four sewers, six against, and three with no opinion. Of the approximately 30 homes on Hazard Street, that made our decision difficult, but at the time, the minimum assessment would have been $23,000 per household. We decided to put a moratorium on sewers until we could find a more cost-effective way to do it. Fast forward to 2017, the sewer subcommittee decided to combine more expansion areas like Hazard Street and left more, with less expensive areas like Ty Oak Avenue to make it more cost-effective. I repeat, the decision to continue the sewer projects was a unanimous decision by the sewer subcommittee, brought to the town council for a vote, by unanimous decision, five to zero, not four to one, has told to the taxpayers. To move forward with the Hazard Street sewer project, the Hazard Street taxpayers have not been ignored. We have tried to come up with a friskfully responsible way to solve this situation, professionally and respectfully. For all those responsible, responsibility and negative comments to fall on the back of Councilman McGee is totally unfair and unsubstantiated. I understand that I work for the taxpayers of District Three, and our community has always been a great place to raise a family. The values that we share with our neighbors are the envy of other districts. Let us stop the negativity and cruel comments, let us take a breath and work for our district, our community, and our town. To the voters of District Three, I will continue to be your voice of reason to move the town of Coventry forward in a positive manner. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McGee. Appreciate your comments as well. Any other comments regarding the initial motion and second? If not, having heard the additional motion, would Mr. LaBosinier and Mr. McGee care to withdraw the first motion and second?
Withdraw the second and first of the motion.
Which one? Withdraw the motion. You can, I'd like to hear you.
I will withdraw the motion at this time, to accept this resolution due to Mrs. Carlson's concerns, and if you have any other questions or statements as to things that may or may not be in here, because I mean, the intent is to stop the project where it's, you know, or substantially close to where it is now in light of the information that has come forward, but with you, you know, in respect, I will withdraw my motion.
Well, I'd actually like to include both motions in my motion, because I'd like to get more information, but also, I meant, sorry, got too many motions up here. Because I think, yes, we have to halt this project, absolutely, but there are other, probably other ways we can explain it and put some more information out there before we vote on these motions. Resolutions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McGee, would you care to withdraw your second of the initial?
No, I would not care. I think this is a big resolution, I think we're going to stop the project, we can still have discussion after the resolution, but I do not want to withdraw my second.
Okay.
I'm not throwing the resolutions out, I would just like to get more discussion first. I agree with the intent of the resolution. Plus, we just got a new revised one when we sat down, so I didn't, I haven't, and I don't. No, can't hear you.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. I guess it's, motion has been withdrawn, so the second is sort of like, not germane. Thank you for the legal jargon. At this time. All right, so at this time, the motion, presentation, right, before the B1 and B2. Okay, that motion, that motion is in May, right, you agree? All right, to move the public forum ahead of B1 and B2, all right? We have a motion and a second at this time, and all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, and that's four one. Okay, so at this time, Mr. Waters, I guess we have Weston and Sampson signing off on this one, or is that correct?
Yep, we will have a, just for the audience, we'll have a presentation, this is similar to the presentation that was done back on September 25th at the town council meeting by our engineers, Weston Sampson, Mr. Nichols will be leading the presentation, you can see visuals on either wall, followed by our finance director, Bob Tebow, he will be doing a historic presentation on the finances of the sewer program overall. And then after the two presentations, it's my understanding that we'll have the public forum at which there'll be an opportunity for the public to come forward and ask questions. Our town solicitor, Nick Gorham, will be moderating that public forum to help maintain order. We do have a microphone over here, correct? Yep. So if you have questions at the end, you can come up to the microphone and then we'll go from there. So at this time.
If I could, if I could just.
Three, two. Oh, do you want to, to help keep order, you want to limit questions to two or three minutes?
Well, we haven't got to the presentations yet. I think that's probably a good idea, but let's, the presentations. Incidentally, let me just precede the presentation with, the general intent of this meeting tonight was information, that's why we're having this meeting. In between scheduling this informational meeting to the residents that are concerned, town manager decided it would be not a bad idea to go temporary, stopping the sewer project, and I think he talked to all council people, and I think basically we're in agreement with his idea, and a total stop on Hazard Street, up to the point where they can cut it off. Again, that said, that's where we're leading up now to the informational part of the meeting. I must say, however, my opinion, sewers are a good thing. I only have to drive by my neighborhood today, and I see a septic system being put on, residents at the corner of Laurel and Princeton, big septic system going in. I also heard yesterday morning that two houses down, they need a big septic system project going to be done in the near future. So I would love sewers in Oak Haven. I've said that for 38 years I've lived there. Unfortunately, we're not on the high priority list, okay? And we'll probably, I don't know if we'll ever see them in Oak Haven, but they're going to spend, spend, spend on putting in the septic system that at best will be temporary, where sewers are permanent. Okay, Mr. Nichols, are you here to start that informational hearing now on the project? Go right ahead. Please bear with us so we can get through this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So for those of you who don't remember me, I'm Kent Nichols with Weston and Sampson. With me tonight on my left-hand side is Kimby Duleyemo, who has been the principal author of the more recent versions of the Coventry facility plan. I actually wrote probably the bulk of the original plan that we put together back in the 90s, early 90s, and spent a lot of time at that point studying various sections of Coventry and the sewer needs. So I think we're actually pretty well prepared to answer a bunch of questions. In the interest of time tonight, we're going to go through a very quick summary of the facility planning process and kind of the history of where we've been with sewers in Coventry. As I said, we're going to do that relatively quickly for two reasons. One is, I know a lot of you may have already seen my summarized presentation at one of the past town council meetings. I'm actually hopeful that maybe a few of you actually came to our public meeting when we did the facility plan, when we actually did this, and we tried to get people to be interested and come out and talk about sewer planning. And you, so you may have also seen it either in front of the sewer subcommittee or actually at our public hearing that we did back in the facility plans. And so the first question is, what is a sewer facility plan? Click the slides, I don't know how that, Ed, how does that work? I just waved to you. Good, okay. So the first thing is, a little discussion of why we do facility plans, how that works. Facility planning is a historic thing where the town takes on a challenge, in this case, a utility challenge dealing with where to extend sewers to, and has to make some decisions. Where does that happen? It's not random. We try to make good decisions with that using physical, geophysical, sometimes ground conditions, and some calculations and engineering judgment. And we also take into account a collection of data to the degree that we can capture information from the public and from as many sources of physical information as we can. That means DEMs records and other places like that. In the case of facility planning in Coventry, facility planning actually dates back to shortly after the Clean Water Act was passed in the 70s, the state started to take on this opportunity to look at what needed to be done to protect water resources in all areas. And believe it or not, there are a lot of places that had sewers going back, you know, into the 1800s, when they were dense cities, but most places like Coventry didn't have any real sewers at all, and if they did, they were limited to some of those very densely developed male neighborhoods, and they were just pipes that went out to the river. So the goal at the point in the 70s was to figure out, well, where should we extend infrastructure to and why? The 70s culminated, late 70s culminated in a facility plan by C.T. McGuire for Coventry, which was done circa 1977. That was predated actually by the 208 regional area-wide management plans that were done by the state and federal governments that kind of pre-did that and said, there are certain areas of various towns in all states that will eventually need sewers. So Coventry actually undertook it in the mid to late 70s, they finished their first facility plan. That facility plan pretty clearly showed areas of eastern Coventry that needed sewers. Thereupon, on a pretty regular basis, the town took to refine that plan, to revisit that plan, to see if there were other things made. As most of you know, we did not build a serious, large-scale system of sewers in Coventry in the 1970s. We also didn't do it in the 1980s. We did at some point in the late 1980s, the town did vote for a couple of sewer extensions that were done circa 1988, 89, and honestly, there was a couple of facility planning steps in between there. In general, the goal of the facility plan is to make sure that the information that's presented and used to make decisions is current and is relevant to the decision-making process. It revisits the physical information as much as it does the cost of sewers, as well as, has anything changed? Do we have a need to change the approach that we've used? So in the case of Rhode Island DEMs regulations, they actually, in order for us to stay current with their funding program for sewers, the state revolving fund home program, the town has to complete a reaffirmation as a minimum or a update to the facility plan every five years. And so if you look at the schedule, starting in the 70s, there was a plan done in the late 70s, one done in the early 80s, I think the first one that we were involved in was done in the 80s. It was kind of revisited with some isolated studies through the period of the 80s. We then, the first one I was involved in personally to a great degree was undertaken circa 1992, culminating in about 1995. We then revisited that again circa early 2000s. The 2003 facility plan reaffirmation was notable, because that's when the fast-track sewer project was built, including the interceptor down Ty Oak Gap and Sandy Bottom Road and up Washington Street to West Wark. Again, revisited in 2010, and most recently, we presented an update to the facility plan in 2016. So there have been a lot of opportunities through that time to try to collect information. I would say the thing that's most notable in that facility planning is, the areas, the principal areas that we've been discussing, the sewers of Coventry, have not changed significantly in that period of time. There are a number of areas that have been captured in the prior facility plans that little by little we've actually decided probably can be handled with onsite wastewater treatment systems, OWTSs, to use the term that DEM uses, and those, or septic systems, for what most people have said. Those systems, we felt like had advanced enough that we could take some areas off safely, and frankly, the process of building sewers has been very slow in Coventry, so we just haven't extended out to too many places over that period of time. But as you can now see, there's been a pretty long history of the facility plan. So one thing I thought was of note, and I presented it at the last meeting, this is actually a photocopy of a figure from the 1977 facility plan, again authored by C.T. McGuire at the time. And as you can tell, probably a little hard to read this, but if you look really closely at those areas outlined in gold and yellow, those are pretty much all the areas that we're continuing to discuss for sewer extensions in Coventry at this point in time. Over a period of 40 years, very little changed in that. Just look to the next one if you would. We did undertake a goal of trying to refine that plan as much as we could, so going through the later facility plan, starting in the circa 95 plan, we broke the town up into areas, and actually, back when we did this, these sub-areas were actually used to do some analysis, and one thing that's been discussed is a questionnaire. At the time this was done, we actually sent a questionnaire to every home that was in these service areas, and we compiled those back, we actually used the subconsultant to compile those back into a database of what people thought, both to get input on what people felt their septic systems were capable of and how they were functioning, but also to try to collect people's opinions on sewers, which sewers aren't always popular, but we wanted to try to get that information. And that factored into the equation originally. As each subsequent update and reaffirmation of the facility plan proceeded, we started little by little to take the areas out. So what you'll see is some gray blobs in this figure. Those are actually areas that we've since taken out of the equation that right now don't appear to actually need sewer long-term, and they're not figured into the plan. The big picture for Coventry has always been to try to get the densely populated areas in eastern Coventry, particularly areas around the lake and around the rivers to be served by sewers at an eventual point. So what did we do in the last facility plan? This is kind of a quick summary of kind of where we were. We had built a few sewers already, and I'll talk about the areas of town that had been sewed up until this point in time. One of the main things we do is we recheck the flows to see where we stand. So for those of you who hadn't heard, Coventry actually made a decision back in the 1980s to join the West Wark Regional System. West Wark had a facility plan that actually showed that they could build a very sizable wastewater treatment plant down on Pulaski, I mean, down on Pontiac, and they actually built a facility that was large enough and eventually could be upgraded to allow some capacity for Coventry. So at that point in time, Coventry made the option of, instead of building its own plant that originally would have been located along the shores of the salt bank of the Tuxed River, we actually ended up joining the West Wark Regional Facility, and Coventry purchased at that time 2.25 million gallons a day of sewer capacity, average daily flow basis, which is actually quite a bit. It's enough certainly for all those areas that are still enough to service and long-term treat, treat to a very high level and discharge cleanly to the environment, be effluent from all those areas in eastern Coventry. But, as I said, the facility plan moved slowly, and over time, we found that the needs were changing slightly, so we rearranged the flows a little bit here and there. At the end of these processes, we did see that areas like Contract Six and Six A, which was the lakeside drive area, the area bounded by Ty Oak Gap and Arnold Road and Lake Ty Oak, were pretty high needs areas, that was done. In addition, the town decided that they could get a grant, a little bit of grant money to help institute the sewers up on Industrial Drive, all the way up to the town hall, so that was kick-started a little bit. And then the other thing is- And then the other thing is, we actually made provisions in there for the town to make an acquisition of the Woodland Manor Force Main, which actually runs from the Woodland Manor Development, way out on Moose Neck Hill Road, all the way to the Westwark line. And long-term, had always been envisioned to be a better fit for the town to own and maintain, had previously been privately owned. So with that, we also had utilization of those lines planned, and we decided that this facility plan adopted in 2016 would help us kind of guide the program forward as we see it, so. So, one thing that happens in the facility plan, this goes back to the original plan and has been updated each time, is we talk a lot about physical conditions in the planning area. We talk about why we might actually need sewers, and what actually governs the need for sewers in these areas. A lot of the criteria are about what's happening in the ground. And the reason we do that is because septic system, once you have a septic tank, at the end of this, the real treatment in a septic system actually occurs in the ground, in the leaching system that goes beyond your septic tank. Most people think, my septic system's running really well, if I can flush my toilet, my system never backs up. But that doesn't necessarily govern what makes a septic system function well. What actually makes it function well is a zone of unsaturated ground below the septic system discharge field, and then a zone of saturated below that, which allows the biology to establish and do some treatment in there. Things that contribute to making areas not suitable for septic systems include shallow groundwater, shallow bedrock, extremely steep slopes, specific types of soils. Glacial till tends to be very tight, doesn't really percolate well. Some other types of soils tend to be very loose, but gravels and sands are very nice and they drain well for a septic system, but the water doesn't stay long enough to get good treatment. So soil suitability is a big issue. We also looked at things like, if your proximity to a well is very close, proximity to a water supply, or really small lots where the actual construction of a compliant septic system doesn't really work. So we worked through all those issues as well. So, in the end, Coventry had been through a process of building sewers. I'll kind of go back through the history a little bit, but for those of you who kind of followed along in the discussion, we started by building very small inlets of sewer all along the Westwark border. A lot of those were built privately, some of those were built by the town. Things like, in the 1980s, we built small extensions to some industrial and commercial facilities. The Victor Electric Sewer up in Harris is a good example. What was at the time, the Cal Chemical Line that extended a small pump station down at the very southern end of Arnold Road. The line that served the North Road Terrace Housing Authority property off of Tyo Gap, right near the Westwark line. But there was principally never really a substantial sewer system in Coventry. So that changed most drastically in the early 2000s, circa 2003. The town began to identify an opportunity that came about when West Greenwich was entertaining the location of the Immunex BioNext project, which then later became the Amgen facility. And at that time, there was a need to extend some additional sewer service to get a very large quantity of wastewater from that site back to the treatment plant in Westwark. And so Coventry entered the negotiations for that, and through negotiation, was offered a grant of approximately $6 million from that group, a little over $6 million, to buy their portion of what would be the town of Coventry's plan in this episode. And basically, what happened at that point in time is, and I apologize for the map, but at the end of the session, we also brought a big board up that we'll put up in the front if anyone has a real, Tim's actually already assembled it, sorry, which actually will show you all the lines in Coventry if you're interested. But this map kind of color codes them. Essentially, what happened is, at the end of Hawkins Hill Road, we picked up flow from the Amgen facility, we brought it all the way down to Tyo Gap, we ran it down to Sandy Bottom Road, we built a new large-scale pump station, and if you have a drive down Sandy Bottom Road, you see that big pump station every day you drive by there. And that station then pumps up around the corner to about Noddy Oak, where it goes back again by gravity down Washington Street, all the way to the Westwark system. Continues to flow by gravity pretty much all the way through there then. And that system principally allowed Coventry to have access to the, what we call the lateral sewer areas in the town, the areas that had always been identified as needs areas, but that we couldn't previously treat because Coventry had no principal sewer system. So, the sewer program, kind of most recently, after that, we culminated in a few sewer projects. We did Contracts Four, Five, Six. Recently, the town did Contract Seven, which, as I said, was the Industrial Drive area up to the Town Hall. And then we had designed a Contract Eight, which was Quidnick. And I think as Councilman McGee had said earlier, there was a stopping point where we kind of said, well, Quidnick is looking very expensive because mostly because of a lot of rock. So we set Quidnick aside. And honestly, everything had been set aside until we restarted with the Arnold Road pieces. And the two Arnold Road pieces are notable because they were driven primarily by the town's decision and vote to reconstruct the roadway. And the challenge is, we did not want to dig up a newly reconstructed beautiful roadway to put sewers in after maybe five or so years. And Tyro Lake being as sensitive as it is, the thought process was, let's get some sewers in underground. So, we ended up doing the Northern Arnold Road and the Southern Arnold Road projects, which are essentially completed at this point in time. And you've seen a lot of construction out there. What you see out there right now is actually the road reconstruction because the sewer work is done. So, again, just to revisit existing planning areas in the town, 2016, they, as I said, do not look vastly different from what was done back in the earlier days of the sewer program. The areas that we have proposed, the sewers in addition to that hazard as part of Quidnick, portions of the areas along both sides of Hawkins Hill Road, the additional infill areas down along both sides of Arnold Road, in particular, the areas lying close along the lake where there's water quality issues in the lake could be thought of. Those primarily include the West Shore Drive and the East Shore Drive areas, and then a number of other small infill areas, both along the Salt Ranch of the Tuxit, and as I said, you know, pieces of Quidnick that we know the soil conditions and rock quality and issues are up there. With that, I think I did wraps, and pass back to Paul.
All right. Do you want to put up our finance presentation, please? Our finance director will now go over a little bit of the finances of the current sewer fund, particularly the borrowing that's outstanding, as well as some of the options for going forward, and what the status of the town sewer fund is currently. Bob?
Thank you. Hi, my name is Paul Tebow, I'm the finance director for the town. As the manager stated, I'll be giving a brief presentation on the finances of the sewer program from inception to today. And you can follow along on the walls as you do with Mr. Nichols. The sewer program began in 2004. The following funding sources we utilized to start that program: $6 million, a $6 million grant from Immunex, which is now Amgen, a $6 million tax anticipation note, and $3.4 million loan from the State Economic Development Corporation. The town has expanded the program over the years by securing the following loans: $3.2 million Rhode Island Clean Water Financing Agency Loan 2006, $5 million in 2007, $2.9 million in 2009, $2.4 million in 2012, $2.4 million in 2013. The Economic Development Corporation tax anticipation notes were retired and rolled into a loan in 2013 at almost $8.2 million, and this calendar year, a $1.2 million loan from our financing. The town also has annual loan obligations to the town of Westwark as governed by the inter-ministerial agreement between the two towns for sewer services. And those are as follows: 2003, $20.9 million wastewater facilities upgrade at the plant in Westwark, of which Coventry share is 22.2%. 2004, Upper Maisy Quinn Intercepter Upgrade Project, $3 million, of which Coventry share is 27.39%. 2005, Lower Maisy Quinn Pump Station Force Main Project, $7.7 million, Coventry share is 27.39%. 2006, Upper Maisy Quinn Intercepter Upgrade Project, additional funding of $500,000 was needed to complete that project, of which Coventry share again was 27.39%. 2007, Clyde Intercepter Project, $1.675 million, of which the town's share is 44.2%. And 2015, Phosphorus Remove Oakgrade Project at the Westwark Treatment Facility, $12.5 million, Coventry share of that is 21.38%. The town's FY '18 debt service for sewer-related bonds, both its own issue and Westwark's issue, would be $2,593,369. Up until about fiscal '12, the realized revenues were pretty sufficient to pay debt service and other expenses without making any major impact to the fund balance. Since fiscal '12, fund balance has trended downward as noted below. You see, FY '10, the fund balance was $3.97 million. FY '11, $4.7 million. FY '12, $5.4 million. FY '13, $3.3 million. FY '14, $4.2 million. FY '15, $3.9 million. FY '16 reduced to $1.48 million. Fiscal '17, pre-audit, subject to change, fund balance is $2.4 million. The source of all those numbers from fiscal '10 to '16 are annual audit financial statements, with the exception of fiscal '17, which is pre-audit. Per the trust indenture between the town of Coventry and Wells Fargo Bank and Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank, formerly Rhode Island Clean Water, the annual fund balance must be 125% of Coventry issued annual debt service. Fiscal '16, fund balance was only 106% of the annual Coventry issued debt service. Fiscal '17, pre-audit fund balance is 167% of the annual Coventry issued debt service. Major reasons for the downward trend in fund balance are as follows: The 2012 Rhode Island Clean Water Loan, the annual debt service on the loan is exceeding the assessments billed by approximately $47,500 a year. Some of the individuals have paid their entire assessments upfront, but as we continue to build, the debt service exceeds the annual bill that we're sending out. 2013 Rhode Island Clean Water Loan, the annual debt service is greater than the assessments by over $160,000, because we're currently not billing any assessments on that 2013 loan. The 2013 loan is a loan that in part helped construct Arnold Road North, was constructing Hazard Street, and whatever other projects that will move forward at that point. In 2013, the tax anticipation note that I previously mentioned, that dated from 2004, was converted to a bond, where previously we were paying just interest on that note, we're now paying principal and interest because it's a full bond, and that, that's an additional $364,000. The 2015 Westwark Plaza was upgraded, it's an additional $187,000 plus. 2016, we got to take a one-year prior period adjustment for change in construction progress, which was $1.4 million. Prior to tonight's town council vote, which I assumed was going to take place before this presentation, the vote, to reevaluate, prior to the town council's vote this evening to reevaluate the sewer program, which the vote's taking place after now, the following actions were to be utilized to improve the health of the sewer program's fund balance: Mandate physical hookups for all prior future projects, construct sewers using the unused $2.2 million from 2013 Clean Water Loan, Sewer Arnold Road South, which would stay dry until Contract Nine, which would potentially be Briar Point, would be completed, and then the Briar Point area and the Arnold Road South line would then become active, allowing us to assess. Current options that could be considered to improve the financial balance of the sewer program are as follows: Continued construction in neighborhoods that want sewers, inquire about restructuring the existing debt, revenue anticipation notes, the fund balance stays stayed below the previously mentioned 125%, and general fund pays a portion of the sewer fund debt service with voter approval at the financial town meeting, again, if fund balance stayed below the previously mentioned 125%. And that's my presentation.
What everybody heard from our town engineer, sewer consulting engineer, as well as our finance director, sort of the history of the town sewer program, as well as sort of the financial situation, which the fund balance for the sewer fund is currently, is not too positive. One of the main drivers that the town council considered in 2016, when reinitiating the sewer program, was to help the fund balance of the sewer program. If action hadn't been taken in 2016 to reinitiate the program, then the general fund would have to subsidize the sewer fund, and that means that the town would have to charge taxpayers a amount of money that would help offset the expenses of the sewer fund. So, in 2016, when the town council heard a presentation from our sewer engineers, as well as our finance director, part of the consideration was, what areas of town would help, are dense enough to bring more customers online, as well as keep the cost of sewer assessments low, as well as the environmental considerations. So those were some of the things that the council back in 2016 considered when reinitiating the project. Again, it's never easy to face a $20,000 sewer assessment, but unfortunately, that's what it costs. From my understanding, it's similar cost to installing a septic system. But, that's...
No!
Sorry. I guess I'm oversimplifying that, depends on the type of septic system you install.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Waters and Mr. Nichols. I thank the sewer subcommittee for coming out tonight, and I thank the council for being here. This information has been conveyed a few times. I don't think the information is changing. And again, 40 years on the sewer program in Coventry, and we have a very, very small percentage of areas and streets in our town that we'll even ever see sewers or have experienced some sewers. And in the future, as costs go up and up and up, it's probably going to be very doubtful that most of the town, or if even some of the town, may see, you know, sewers in the future. However, we have done some sewer work. The sewer work that has been done has been good. And again, I only have lived in Coventry 38 years. I know we're not the city of Cranston, we're not the city of Warwick, we're not the city of Westwark, or the town of Westwark. We're the town of Coventry. We've got varied acreage, 64 square acres, and not everybody is even thinking about sewers. Of all the years we've been doing sewers, this is, to my recollection, the first time there's been a question on it. An outcry. Well, 2011, I wasn't on the council, and I didn't read too much in the paper, so let me qualify that. Maybe the first time that I've been on the council three different times over 35 years. And this time, we're facing it. All right, so what I'm going to do now is, and again, we were going to vote for the two resolutions first, and I think, I think we're going to go that way, but before that, we do have, in that we've booked up the public forum and information program from our town engineers, sewer engineers, and our town finance director, and our town manager. So, what we're going to do is open up some question time, but we are going to limit it. And I don't know, is Mr. Wurzika there with the, do you have a timer?
Three minutes, two minutes.
I'd say, I'd say, all right, we'll start with three minutes, and if it gets two over cumbersome, we'll go two minutes. All right, and you've got the time, and Mr. Spearmann, are you available to call on people?
Right down there.
Okay. Next? All right, well, let me, Mr. Gorham has pointed out, and if we would appreciate the noise being held down. Three minutes is what we did on our financial town meeting, and we do it every year, and three minutes, believe me, is, I can...
And three minutes, believe me, is, I consider more than fair. And I majored in communication at the University of Rhode Island. So we're going to go, and Mr. Gorham is going to handle this, and Mr. Spearmine. It'll be three minutes, and Mr. Wurzika will time it. All right? And if it becomes too much, we'll go two minutes, and then we'll call for a vote. All right, Mr. Spearmine? What's that? Are you doing it?
The only rule I think is, we're just going to let...
All right, listen up, please.
I think the rule is, we're going to let people speak and express their ideas on what they've heard under two resolutions, but if you could focus on the resolutions, I think it would be most helpful to the council because they are going to vote on them. So, that and the three minutes. I've been the moderator for the town financial meeting for the last couple of years. We do the three-minute rule, and there's rarely any dissent. People find that to be a reasonable amount of time to speak. So we'll just play it by ear. If somebody has something extraordinary to talk about, we can always try to extend the time. Otherwise, it's three minutes.
Directly to our town manager, do you have any...
They can talk in... Yeah, just give your name and address, and, you know, try to keep your comments directed toward the council and the town manager.
We're going to use this role here. If anybody who has anything to say, just get in line. If there's room or time for, come back again, you can also do that. Take three minutes. Try to refrain from any, you know, insulting remarks or anything to the council, and they will do a thing to you. They will do a thing to you. Okay? Okay?
Kate Whittingill, 586 Old Main Street, Coventry. I have a question, very simple question. Where does $20,000 come from? How did you get to that number, please? $20,000 assessment.
For sewer assessment?
I'm asking the question.
For sewer assessment?
How did you get, yes, to the $20,000 for the sewer assessment, please? Thank you.
The current ordinance calls for the assessment, the cost of construction must be covered by assessments. The assessments are based on design flow, so, for example, a three-bedroom house would be 115 gallons times three, would be 345 gallons times the rate, and that would give you the assessment. So it's not a $20,000 number, it's the cost of construction, applying the formula given in the ordinance, and that's how we come up with it. It's not an arbitrary number, it's a calculated number.
No, I understand, it's not arbitrary. Did it used to be per foot on the rentage of the property?
Yes.
Can I ask what changed that?
It's never been per foot. It used to just be a basic number per house, per residential unit, or a certain dollar amount per thousand of commercial value, but that wasn't fair. So we did it based on DEM gallons per day. And we would take the entire contract, figure out the cost, then take every single property, figure out the gallons per day, and basically divide the entire contract by the total gallons per day, and then you multiply it and get the number. Thank you.
Thank you.
James LeBlanc, 43 Hazard Street. I just want nobody to be misled to me. Mr. Waters, you said it's going to be $20,000. So, if I owned a home on Arnold Road, and it was a four-bedroom home, the calculation would be 115 gallons per day times four bedrooms is 460 gallons per day. And Mr. Tebow can confirm, but the price per gallon is $64. So my four-bedroom home, the assessment would be $29,440. Now, after the loan that the town would provide me at 6% over 20 years, the interest alone would be $21,180. So the total of the assessment would be $50,620. And when I flushed my toilet, I still would not even be connected. So you would have to pay an additional $5,000 to $7,000 to connect as well. So, when Glenn Skirka did his presentation on June 23rd, 2016, he wanted to give homeowners an option to connect to sewers. This is mandated on us. This is America, not Russia. We should get options.
Mr. Heatherman.
It's Tom Heatherman. For purposes meeting, it'll be 110 Arnold Road, although I live at a different spot of Coventry. I think the problem from what I'm hearing here is actually the resolution that was pushed in 2015. For instance, on the section of Arnold Road that I live, that have the building on, it's $835,000 being divided by 43 properties. When you really figure it out, the pipe is sized to carry the whole other section of Arnold Road. So the pipe, the engineering firm, I would ask this, is obviously larger at the end going up to Route 3, correct?
You're at the northern end of Arnold Road?
I would assume so. Right down there, Route 3.
Yeah, so if you front on the section of gravity between, it's in Montana?
I'm on a force main.
Between Montana and out, your pipe would be sized for the areas south of the causeway, but if you're on a low-pressure sewers, that pipe is not sized for the higher.
Okay, so basically, at my house, or my building, we're sized to be carrying that load up above, correct?
The gravity sewer is sized, and the upper end is sized higher. The low-pressure sewer is not.
I would just question, before doing the calculations, if it were based on the percentage, $35 per thousand, we would be $7,700. Now I'm at $29,000. You want me to get an engineered plan? You want me to submit money to the town of Coventry, to the town of West Warwick, to move forward with all this? The question still remains whether or not, because I'm zoned residential, it just seems like weird that the thought went to this, because how did we get from $7,700 to $29,000 in such a short period of time? I don't know of anything else which is going up almost 400%. Can somebody answer that? I understand construction costs have gone up, they haven't gone up 400%. So I would say it's the way you're looking at it in billiards where the issue is, and I would like to see a repeal of the way that was done in 2015.
My question to you is, did you ever get $7,700?
It was.
That was never a price.
It was $35 for a commercial rate, correct?
But it's $35, it was $35 per thousand?
Yes, and my problem, if you do quick math, it's $220,000, which comes out to $7,700.
$220 times 35 is only $7,700.
You want to calculate, you can do it.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, so somehow it's going up 400%. Or pretty close. And I haven't even hired the contractors on book up.
They had minimums back then as well, so I don't see how it went up that much.
I'm going by your numbers, I didn't make these up.
But now, now it's just... Now it's just based on gallons per day.
Which, if you really want to do gallons per day, I'm glad you said that, because it's an accounting firm. We have two toilets and we have two sinks. It's maybe about 21 gallons per day.
Right, but when we go on the DEM website and we look up 110 Arnold Road, it shows 345 gallons per day.
Okay.
And we're not going to show, we're definitely 345 gallons per day.